The next application is number 13, an application for the purpose of incorporating this amount of the name from the document. It was written in 1846, 2006, 860 Broadway, also known as 27th and 28th Avenue. And 32th Avenue, East East End, and Lady Madison Square. Late 19th century, Chris Dast, he had that right, and he built it in 1944, and all of that. Depp, Leach, and Company, and Leach and Company. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and adjust the height. So C60, four slash ten more.
There's some big civil servants around the borders, of course.
The primary pictures, Caroline Pashon, the cremation staff. This subject property is located at the northeast corner facing Broadway and 17th Street. And a portion of the building facing East 18th Street. Here you see some historic images, photos and drawings of buildings. So this building was constructed with E28, 328, in a neo-Paris style by Depp Leffey Now. And then in 1925, the building lost most of its original neo-Paris ornament that you see here in this front room. And it was recreated with Brett and Sarah Potter by the architectural work that they do in the company. So seeing here in the designation photograph, you see that some of the original elements have survived, including some wrought iron metalwork at the transoms and some of the bays, and additional iron corners and terracotta elements at the top floor. So there are two components to this application. First, at the ground floor, the applicant is proposing to replace some portions of the inch fil. Here on Broadway, they're proposing to move these air doors or nonhistoric inch fils, as well as these two center display windows. And they're going to be installing paired metal glass doors here. And then the applicant is also proposing to move, here's some historic wrought iron rails that you see here, the transoms. And they're proposing to remove that and install new metal doors with movers behind. And then the second component of the application is to construct a two-story rooftop addition, which will feature some brick with a terracotta base. And will be visible over the primary and secondary to the facade. The architect, Sharon Paulson, will discuss the project in more detail and walk you through the specifications of the building. Good morning, and this is Sharon Paulson, our chief architect.
This project was an interesting excavation of history. And when we started the project, we went with the designation report, and it had the interesting words "rescind" in the entry for the building. But it stated that it was a building by Depp Leffey Now. And for those who don't know this household name, Depp Leffey Now, he was an architect who did his apprenticeship with Henri LaBrousse in Paris. And he came to America in the late 1840s. He was one of the founders of the American Institute of Architects. I love that, Mr. Chairman. And he is credited as being the architect who brought the mansard to America. Which we thought, well, this is interesting. What is the signature of this building? And then we found this entry about it being skin. So we started going to all the usual research places. And we found this picture. And we thought, well, this is a good building. It's sort of the massing and everything, but it looks completely different. So we said, let's find out more. Let's see what kind of rooftop addition might be possible on this building, given this location on very large open space. So we started out at Avery, or Depp Leffey Now's paper store, and we found all the original drawings for the building. And it was, that's what's illustrated here. It was a very beautiful red brick building, very Victorian, with very sculpted cast iron mirrors and collars. And we thought, well, wouldn't it be nice if we could bring some of this back? But none of it is there. It was really reskinned. And the only original facade that remains that was Leffey Now's sign is actually on the service side of the 18th Street side of the building. But these are the original drawings by Leffey Now. We also learned that he had done an alternative plan for the building, which had similar base space and window openings, but included a roof above that top panel. So then the new building that did the skin in the 1920s, on the Broadway side, the chamfered corner and the 17th Street side. And they had removed some other elements. Originally, there had been a two-story glass and metal piece at the corner that was removed and a more ornamental, single-story entrance was put at the chamfer. At the time of designation, the building was pretty much the same massing with this buff-colored brick. The remaining, from Depp Leffey Now, big architectural ornament is this terracotta ban at the top. And the apothecia scalloped edge at the very top of the building, there's a very flat metal, what I think is an encasement of what was probably a more gravel scalloped edge ornamental piece. So that, the profile remains, but the sculptural elements are not seen. And at the time of the renovation, they had installed decorative metal in the transoms. They had put very high solid bulkheads within these different areas. And they had turned these into windows and put the door at the corner so that it didn't have the variety of entrances available on 17th Street anymore. But in doing all of this research, we then went back to the designation report to look at what was the story of this site. And site actually had been owned by the same family for many, many years. The Parishes. And they built this building. It had originally been their home. There had been a small building on the corner which had sort of interested mansardish, I would imagine, put onto it. And it became the Union Club. The great thing about this location is that it's incredibly well documented because of all the parades and all the ceremonial aspect. So you can see the original mansion of this era, and then an addition that was put on the corner. So the reason that we came to feeling that the location of the building might actually be in line with the history of the site is that this is a site that has had for over 100 years many different additions, changes, et cetera. And last but not least, Depp Leffey Now had his office in the building. So we thought that this was an opportunity to take that flying leap and see if there was an appropriate rooftop addition that might be possible on the building. So we'll take away all of this here. And the other part is that when we were first asked to look at the building, we were presented with the usual zoning diagrams that show the available square footage, which is approximately 12,000 square feet, the undeveloped development size. And the zoning analysis showed a four-story box sitting on top of the building. Well, we advised the owners, four stories is never going to happen. And we said, but let's see if there's another way to do this. So we put the two-story box on the building, and we modeled it. And we can see the two-story box from everywhere. And I said, maybe this is not the location where you can do the sort of boggle on top of the building, but you can look for a more demure type of addition that's really more contextual and something that really looks like it belongs to the district and the building that it's part of. So what we're proposing. This is the existing ground floor plan. And the proposed ground floor plan maintains the current lobby, but we're adding an elevator, which will happen in fact as we go up. All of the other floors remain the same. And then at the rooftop, the current rooftop has a stair and elevator bulkhead and another mechanical bulkhead on the 18th Street side. This is 17th, this is Broadway. And what we're proposing is to fill out with a seventh floor. And an eighth floor. And these are all sided toward the south side of the building, trunking on 17th Street. And there's nothing to this madness too. The building actually sits in two different zoning districts. The 18th Street side is a manufacturing district, which does not permit residential. The two additional floors that we are proposing are residential floors for the owners of the building. So these are not condominiums, they're just home fragments. And in order to do this, the last bit is to provide the additional stair bulkheads and elevator bulkhead and new mechanical, which is sitting further away. What is the book? So from the south elevation along 17th Street, as Caroline said, what we're proposing is to replace existing decorative grilles with new grilles and a similar grilles at the bulkheads below the display windows and pairs of doors. And a new pair of doors at the chamfered corner to replace the sort of low transom or industrial doors that have been located here. And then above the terracotta and apothecia ban is a new mansard roof, which is very traditional, very contextual to the type of Parisian mansards that we see, which does the same sort of stepping from the larger bank of windows for solid, in a more warmer configuration, to a more condensed parent now. And what we're proposing with materials is a terracotta rain street, both to relate to the mans and the remainder terracotta. But also because in the sections that we're looking at, we can get a little bit more softness and a little bit more layering of materials by using either baguette or rod type installation over that material. And even three different sections. On the Broadway side, again replacing the doorways and windows so that they're a little bit lacier, relate more to the original Leffey Now design. And then extending over the mansard on this side. The remaining, we have some facade on 18th Street remains intact. And the addition, which is set approximately 100 feet back from the street of Broadway. Sharon, are you going to move that boring so that you can see the two together?
Of course.
Who is that brown mass behind the mansard roof? That dark yellow?
Those are the tops of the bulkheads.
Oh, with the stairs?
The stairs, yes.
And those are not, that's an existing one. There's, where's the section? To explain that. This is a section cutting from 17th through to 18th Street. And this is the proposed additional mansard floors. And you can see that the water tank that's on the 18th Street side is taller and therefore screens a lot of the other elements. This is that bulkhead for the stair and elevator. So that is that.
Yes.
And that's at the Broadway?
Yes.
This, this section is cutting through this. And then within the overall street scale, these would be the existing frontages along Broadway. The other buildings along Broadway are quite low scale. This is the tall building. Because as you come to 17th Street, you start to go up to much larger buildings heading over toward Madison. And then the proposed, this is the Barney Noble Building, the one on the corner. And then across the street is the W Hotel, which is a bit more. And generally, the, the scale. Who goes next? Oh, better elevations. And just to finish out the elevations, the two side elevations, this is the one from the faces east, where we're just proposing a pair of block line windows on the seventh floor and the eighth floor. And that just follows the profile of the side wall. And we'll see the visibility of that. And then this is a folded or unfolded elevation. This is the side elevation of the 18th Street facade, which remains as is. This is a court that faces west. And this is actually the north facing Broadway. This is along Broadway just side. And the addition, that side wall is standing up. This is the line of the existing bulkheads. And this is the line of the proposed extension. And we looked, or we had to study this building study. We also, you know, in order to actually be very generous, we provided some additional information on buildings with mansards in the Ladies Mile Historic District. And looked at base heights, sort of body, and additional mansards. And for some of the lower scaled ones, if the base is X, the body is two and a half X, and the mansards are X again. And what we discovered was that our building is actually a little bit taller than a lot of these. And relates, sorry. Relates more to the larger scale mansarded buildings around the north side of Union Square. And one of the things that was interesting to us is that while the Ladies Mile District is quite large and extensive, this is the only building in the Ladies Mile District that is actually on Union Square. The other landmark buildings around Union Square are individual landmarks. And so this was an interesting piece of the puzzle to look into. So some of these are originally built as mansard roofs. Others, such as the neighborhood warrants in Noble, were bad. Map of Union Square, our site right at the corner, which shows from 17th to 18th. And the district boundary, which carves around this way and the different individuals that sit around the square. It's visible. We do not speak of this, but a very visible rooftop addition. But we felt that it could be an appropriate approach to blend this in this form, rather than try to make it a shiny, sparkly. So this is the view close up of the building and the view of the building with the mansard addition. And as we walk down Union Square West, a little further away, we see how it blends in. And as we go further away, you see how, at least in our eye, it blends in while not obscuring the more prominent buildings, especially to the north. So there are some extremely fine buildings as we look north of Broadway, and these can still be visible. And then moving to the west, looking to the east on 17th Street. And then the view on Broadway looking south, where you can see the entire side wall. That is where the extension is the cunning brick of a secondary facade. And then looking from the southwest corner, back towards the side, the condition. And these are from the east. So the existing, the proposed, and the existing, the proposed. Okay, we forgot. Thank you. It is fun to speak. Because one of the key things about the building, it was, well, its architecture made it sort of tone itself down. It became the third factory. And this was in Oracle's office. This was the nightbook, this was the factory. And so it's sort of, it's a very interesting place.
That was a showstopper at the end. Okay. We can go right to the testimony, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Jack Taylor.
Good morning, gentlemen, commissioners. I'm Jack Taylor of the Drive to Protect the Ladies Mile District. The fact that the public hearing calendered for this proposal has been postponed three times reminds us unhappily of the very first certificate of appropriateness of the application to be calendared following the designation of the Ladies Mile Historic District in May of 1989. Like the plan before the commission now, the 1989 proposal involved significant rooftop additions to a very prominent building, the former Siegel Cooper Department Store on Sixth Avenue. For the approval of which, the applicant offered the quid pro quo of reconstructing the cupola that originally capped the building that had long since disappeared. In the end, faced with the probability of strong public disapproval and the likelihood of commission rejection, the applicant withdrew the proposal literally an hour before the public hearing. The architect was Jane Stuart Pollock. We wish the current applicant had done the same. This proposal involved much more than just the building itself. It would dramatically alter the historic skyline of the north side of Union Square, which has remained substantially intact and impressive since 1911, when the Guardian Life Building was constructed. With one minor exception, that skyline is comprised entirely of designated buildings, three of them individually landmark, and two of them, two of them, including of course 860 Broadway, are in the Ladies Mile Historic District. There are two Ladies Mile buildings facing the north and the Union Square. In addition, there is the wondrous view corridor of Broadway from Union Square to Madison Square, the heart of the original Ladies Mile. It would be affected by this proposal obscuring, especially from some angles, the spires of the Mackent Tower Building at 18th Street. Go back to our comparison of the current application with the one in Broadway, the Siegel Cooper Building. Here too, there is a quid pro quo. In return for approval of the highly visible rooftop construction, the applicant offers to restore the configurations of the 17th Street facade that were lost in over eighteen, May in 1925. In the book that we published in 1986, as part of our request for evaluation and the lobbying effort to achieve a Ladies Mile Historic District, we paid particular attention to what the designation report describes as the commanding presence of 860 Broadway, devoting a full page to the 1883 plan of its celebrated architect, Depp Leffey Now. We are all in favor of the restorative aspects of the application before me, but not at the cost of a rooftop enlargement that we consider insensitive and inappropriate to historic districts, the building itself, and the famous square of the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Christophe Gault.
Christophe Gault of the Society for the Architect of the City. New York has not been kind to the work of Depp Leffey Now. Ford of Rod, a student of LaBrousse, he taught gardening and built the foremost plant owners of his time. But because the locations he helped make fashionable were so often redeveloped, say, his down to the 10th Street and later his down to 56th Street, it is mainly his downtown commercial buildings that still exist, like the present item, 860 Broadway. Avery Library has preserved the original design, which you have been shown. So we already know how much we've lost in the pre-designation alterations. But the present application would completely obliterate what little is left of the original design, that is the massing. Lino designed smaller buildings with mansards, which in no way resembled what is called mansard here. The massing of 860 Broadway is simple, and to the degree that such a irregular site can be, it is classical in the LaBrousse sense. The lost detailing was elegant and restrained and is not proposed to be adequately recreated, not at all in the middle section. The building occupies a key location in the view of Broadway from Union Square. And the proposed addition would interfere with our perception of R. H. Robertson's wonderful McIntyre Building. McIntyre Building, and I do not believe that the boards have yet shown sufficient to portray that. The McIntyre Building, its tower rising through the still-preserved low-scale of small commercial buildings along Broadway, all of these magical surviving roof lines are proposed to be wrecked through a self-serving rationale that evinces examples of other buildings and other locations that have mansards or other directorific-like roof lines. In 1955, coached by Talbot Hamlin and Alan Burnham, the second executive director of this commission, Alan Kramer wrote in the Society of Architectural Historians Journal that Lena's subdued and elegant designs were little recognized now, that's in 1955, but functioned as a forerunner of the American Renaissance that flourished after his death. It would be unfortunate if this rare example of this work, a major building in a prominent location, lost its original massing without even the concession from a full restoration of its crude and organized facade. Thank you.
Barbara, say of the Historic District Council. The north end of Union Square is a treasure trove of individual landmarks and buildings within the Ladies Mile Historic District. While Eight Sixty Broadway has endured some sad alterations to its facades, particularly the loss of most of its original neo-grec ornament, its prominent cornice remains a signature component of the building and an intact feature that should be recognized and preserved. The enormous addition being proposed on this very visible splayed corner building threatens to transform the graceful cornice into nothing but a gutter for a historically misguided 21st century mansard roof. The cornice was intended to be the building's apex and crown, not the base for another structure to overshadow and overwhelm it. It might be tempting to look to the Guardian Life Building, currently the W Hotel, at Union Square East as inspiration for a mansard roof atop Eight Sixty Broadway. However, the Guardian Life Building's grand four-story mansard is original to the building, proportional to its twenty-story composition, and appropriate to the overall design of the building, which elsewhere features ornamental cartouches and garlands in the French style. The bulky mansard roof on Eight Sixty Broadway would make the building roughly 30% taller, becoming an affront to the building and to the streetscapes on both the Seventeenth Street and Broadway. HDC finds the lack of a setback to be particularly egregious, as such an obtrusive intervention would appear as though it was purporting to be an original component of the building's design, rather than a necessary fixture referring to its historic setting. HDC asks that the commission reject this proposal and preserve the external cornice in proportions of Eight Sixty Broadway. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioner, and Commissioners, I'm Leo Blackman, Vice President of the Drive to Protect the Ladies Mile, and an architect who lives and works on either side of the historic district. Because Eight Sixty Broadway is so prominent, exposed on two elevations visible across Union Square and the gateway protected part of Broadway, it seems important to get this one right. In addition, the building in the NAC is remodeling and a even grander one. I understand that an earlier iteration of this proposal caused call for adding even more floors to the existing structure. The current drawings show a two-story addition in the form of a mansard. While the suggested bulk may not seem unreasonable, there are few precedents in the district, and there are a few precedents in the district for later expansions up, and even a couple of original mansards on the north side of Union Square, this project does not sit well. The failure unfortunately is in the architecture. The proposal seems fussy in a way that calls attention to itself rather than the landmark. The doors appear weighty, the texture of the roof is unclear, and the ornamental efforts are clumsy. Either a more thoughtful proportionate interpretation of the past, or a lighter, simpler, more modern addition would result in a more successful and appropriate topping here. One last item in the storefront. While the proportions of the 1925 display windows and grill-covered transoms may be spot, we hope the staff will assist the applicant in retaining as much original fabric as possible and detailing the work to withstand the close scrutiny of pastors' body. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other testimony?
Okay. As Jack Taylor referenced, we had originally been calendered to come forward to the commission back in November. The good regulated architects waited toward the objection sheet to be able to come forward because we wanted to confirm that the approach to using a mansard-type roof was massed and was acceptable to the city, and they confirmed that. So that was the reason for the delay and in our bringing the project forward. We did present the project to the Community Board, Plaid Landmarks Committee back in October in preparation for the first scheduled public hearing, and they objected in discussion to the addition on principle, but they congratulated us on developing a design that we thought was the right kind of design approach for this kind of a building and that if it weren't for two stories adding, it might be more acceptable. We also went to consult with the Municipal Art Society's Designation Committee because they are a wonderful group of people, much like yourselves, who give a very honest appraisal of the approach. They too agreed that the architecture of the building had been long lost, that it had historic significance for many reasons, and that a two-story mansardish massing was appropriate. They found some fault with one of our first design elements, which was an attempt to recreate the two-story corner element and then duplicated up at the rooftop, which resulted in a very awkward relationship and a more prominent attention being called to the mansard. We feel that, yes, this is an expansion of the building, but not 30%. It's roughly a 25% expansion in height of the building. That the form of a mansard, if you look at them in Paris, if you look at them in New York, if you look at them in Ladies Mile, is really to diminish the massing as it goes up against the skyline, which we feel this does. We also feel that by using the terracotta for this mansard rather than a stand-in seam or tile-type roof, that we're using a material that both in color and in material relates to some of the most historic components of the building. I believe that it is.